Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call today's zoning board of appeals meeting to order. Today is the December 8th meeting. Can we start with roll call, please?
Chairperson McCarthy.
Here.
Vice Chair Rock.
Here.
Mr. Barrett.
Here.
Mr. Beach.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Russo.
Here.
Ms. Stroker.
Here.
Ms. Tomic.
Here.
And Mr. Bussler.
Here.
Okay, fantastic. First on the agenda for today is the approval of said agenda. We are receiving the packet via the new distribution method, which is the link, right? So we all have the agenda from email. Hope everybody's had a chance to review it. Are there any modifications, updates, corrections to the agenda? Having heard no comments, might there be a motion to approve the agenda as published?
Motion to approve agenda as published.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as published, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Alright, agenda passes. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. As you remember, we did not meet in November, so we gotta go back two months to the October 13th meeting. Everybody's hopefully had a chance to review the meeting minutes, review their comments, review the actions. Are there any edits, corrections, or modifications to the minutes as published? Okay. Someone make a motion to approve the minutes then, please.
Motion to approve minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Motion seconded. All those in favor of the motion to approve the minutes as published, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Alright, motion passes. Next on the agenda are public comments on items not on the published agenda. Is there anybody here from the public to speak on items that aren't on the agenda? Okay. There are no comments from the public. We will move on to whole business, which is simple, because there is no whole business. And jumping into new business, we have three new business items today. We have one case 1438. We also have the approval of the calendar, and then we also have a review of the ZVA bylaws. So Ms. Deck, if we could start with the staff overview of zoning board case 143... Eight? Six?
Good job.
Eight.
Eight.
Good evening, all. Nice to see you. Happy December. Welcome to the last meeting of this EBA for the year. So as the chair said, we have one case before you this evening. Case number 1438 at 31555 Kenneway Court. We do have the applicant here to address any comments or questions that we may have. The applicant is seeking to install six-foot privacy screens in the front yard, and they are seeking variances from two sections of the ordinance, section 46-173 Sub 2 Sub A Sub 1, and 46-173 Sub 2 Sub B Sub 1. The property in question is this poorly outlined red-shaped property. It's just west of us here. This is Groves, right down here. So just west of us, just north of Groves. It is the dead end. The applicant owns both this property and this property, and it's important to point this out. This is the property in which she lives, okay? The property itself, the one outlined in red, is 1.78 acre parcel. It's a R.A. single family. It is heavily wooded, alright, and you can see this little lovely flag here, and I've got it slightly better in this aerial. So the parcel itself, again, it runs along the Rouge, it's fairly irregular. This section right here is actually this, right? Gosh, my favorite thing you've ever taught me, my friend, is the control. So we can... This northern property owns this five... this is a five-foot strip of land. That's what right along this area, this area is, the 35 feet is public right-of-way. That is Kenneway Court. It is part of our... designated on our Act 51 map, which is something that we... the village has to certify annually with M.D.O.T. So this area is public right-of-way. This is owned by Ms. Mr. Mrs. Schwartz. Their driveway, their... the right-of-way essentially functions as their driveway, which you can kind of see in this aerial is going straight up here, right? And then it splits off once you get to the parcel in which they live, and then up over here into that northernmost parcel. As I said, Ms. Schwartz is seeking a variance to install six-foot privacy panels along that five-foot strip of land that's east of the right-of-way. Altogether, there are 13. I know that there's only 10. There's 10 now? Okay. 10 panels. There were... when Ms. Schwartz first came for this, it was the result of a complaint that I'd received from another resident about the panels. At the time, there had been 13, and they are... wow. So this is... let me back up a second. I'm trying to be thoughtful, and it's not working for me. Alright, so this is the entry. This is right here. This is still Kenneway Court. As you can see, it does function as her driveway for both northern properties. This is more direct head-on view of what's there. You can see there's, you know, she's got some signage out here. She's got a couple different decorative panels, the boulders, you know, it's well landscaped. There is some additional... there's like drainage elements from the village that are there. The drain cuts across the driveway at approximately this location, and there's some water service keys over here. So this is what you see when you go down Kenneway Court. In the summer, these panels had been installed, and at the time, there were 13 of them. And Mrs. Schwartz and I, we've talked quite a bit, and we've gone out and we've... I've spent some time and measured earlier this summer. They ranged from about, you know, 10 feet out from there's this little wire fence here. In some instances, those panels were approximately 10 feet away, more or less. In other instances, they were closer to like 3 feet away, right? And upon realizing that, you know, she owns that five-foot strip, and then there's the right-of-way, I did order to have the eight that were in the right-of-way completely removed, right? Those, the frames and the panels. The remaining five that are up, the panels were taken down. Those are the ones that were within that five-foot stretch, and the panels were taken down, but the posts remain pending a decision by this board, okay? So this is just to kind of give you an idea of what's there, right? And she does have them spaced approximately every couple of feet, and they, at the time, these particular pictures were taken, they were set just about a foot above grade, so that the panels were not, you know, sunk into the dirt, which gave them an elevated height of closer to seven and a half feet, right? The panels themselves are 6x3s, like the actual metal without including the frame. So you can see, this is from Mrs. Schwartz's property, the one in which they live. So this is the view from there. And these, this is the neighbor. Let me go back to... The pictures of the play equipment and the deck and whatnot, all, that's all of this particular home, which is one of the primary reasons that Mrs. Schwartz is requesting the variances, right, is obscuring, to obscure the elements within their yard, but as well as the lights that are coming in from Kenneway Circle as people are, you know, pulling in, navigating the turnaround, right? So just to kind of try and give you some perspective, right? So this is her view from the right-of-way, right? And then again, some night shots, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, these Mrs. Schwartz, these are taken from the driveway, right, closer to the property, right? These particular, the nighttime pictures, these are all taken closer, like, in the driveway, right, driveway road. So you can see, it's like she's got, you know, they've... it's well lit at night. We did try for pictures from the inside of the house, but there was just too much.
He's 6'4", so I was trying to get an idea, because that yard is very... we're slowed way down from it.
Okay.
So they're elevated higher than we are. So if you look at the head, the car that's there, he's 6'4", it gives you a way, some kind of relationship to the height of where the headlight is.
If we may just refrain from... we'll ask the Mrs. Schwartz to...
I am so sorry.
No, 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 it's completely fine. I just, the audience listening in won't be able to hear without microphones. We'll ask you to come up to the podium in just a moment, if that's okay. Not quite yet. We're gonna let staff give their presentation, then we'll ask you to come on up.
So, so we've got, so we've got some, got some perspective on, with these pictures to kind of show what's going on. So the five, within this new sketch, so there are still five remaining panels, right, or five remaining sets of posts, all within that five-foot strip of land. The entirety of the request is for those five panels, plus five panels here, shown here, to install a total of 10 panels. These would extend approximately 50 feet in length, and they would, again, be at 6 feet, right? The ordinance does say that, we've got a couple of different things. Fences in the front yard, and this is under the newly adopted fence ordinance standards. Fences in the front yard have to be at least, have an opacity of at least 35%, and they should not exceed 3 feet in height above grade, and shall not extend back towards the front of the principal building more than 8 feet. So Mrs. Schwartz is seeking a variance from really all three of those elements, right? The placement within the front yard, the opacity, the height above grade, and extended back 8 feet. The second section that is applicable in this instance is also related to the placement, and that is section 46-173 Sub 2 Sub B Sub 1, which says, "Privacy screens that do not exceed 6 feet in height above grade are permitted as follows: In all residential families, all single-family residential zoning districts, they can be in rear or side yard to enclose an area of up to 3 feet, and they can, with a maximum total length that does not exceed 25% of the rear lot line length." So again, this is, speaks more to that, the placement within the front yard for which they're seeking the variance. The length, the 50-foot length, that's not at issue, as we can see in the aerial... oops, sorry, 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 sorry. We've got, got over 350, we've got over 350, or approximately 350, feet of rear yard. So the 50-foot distance is not, you know, that falls within line of this second, this section, second subsection of this section. But, so, here we are. We've got, it's a little convoluted, I know. And I think I'm ready for you guys to answer some questions, so I can maybe help parse out some of this differently.
Okay. Do any members of the board have questions for Ms. Deck?
Yes.
Yes. Is there any regulation that covers the obnoxious lights that are coming from the neighbor's yard that are upsetting Ms. Schwartz?
I... no, right? This, I mean, lighting, the lighting standards that we have are generally related to commercial developments, and they speak to, you know, lighting that needs to be downward directed and shielded. But again, those are generally commercial standards.
Alright, okay.
Do we have any views of the lights from, like, from the house, what they're seeing? Versus right next to the driveway?
Yes and no. I did ask for them, and Mrs. Schwartz did send me some pictures. Honestly, they're not helpful to anybody. They wouldn't be. There's so much glare from the inside, the inside lights and the outside lights. It just kind of looks like a... it's very distorted, so it's... so no. It's nothing to share for this evening, unfortunately.
Can you describe the issue of the right-of-way again, where it starts and ends, and...
Yes. So, I'm gonna go here. Alright, so, Kenneway Court, right? We can see it extends. There is sort of like a natural kind of turnaround area here, right, and it extends all the way up. So really, like, the driveway, Mrs. Schwartz's driveway, is right here, and they do, they've got a short little driveway here, right, and their house is kind of right at the five and three, right? This northern property has another driveway that goes up there, and this property is set a little bit more at an angle.
And where is the screen on that red line?
Where's the screen?
Where are those, the panels?
They are, they are in that red line.
Okay.
Or some, well, sorry, the five that were allowed, five of them were in that red line. The other eight that were taken down were probably closer to this side of the red line, right? It's marginally easier to tell in here, right? So, those eight panels were, like, right here, right?
Okay.
And the other, like I said, the other five are within this five-foot strip of land.
But they're all in the right-of-way?
The, these eight that I have removed, those were in the right-of-way. The, right? And so there was a total of 13. Eight were in the right-of-way here. Five were in this narrow strip of land that Mrs. Schwartz owns.
Susie?
Yeah.
Using this mark up here, can you kind of show me where her home would be using it, O.B.?
Alright, keep this in your mind, alright? Because that's, whoop, because this area right here is this, right? So the Mrs. Schwartz's home that she lives in is right here. The other home that is, belongs to this parcel, if you will, is right here. That home is vacant, right? So she owns both homes, but this is the home in which they reside.
To clarify, sorry, the, there's two homes. One's occupied, one's not.
Correct.
The home that's requesting the variance, I understood, was the one that is unoccupied.
Correct.
Just to be clear, even though they occupy the southern home, this variance applies to the property to the north, the bigger shape with the dog leg, south.
Correct.
Little strip of land.
Okay.
Thank you.
If that whole section is right-of-way, why is some, where are some of the panels permitted and others aren't?
Well, this whole section, so, this whole orange box, right, that goes from the... This whole 35 width, right, from this yellow line to this, that's the right-of-way. For whatever reason, this five-foot strip was never included in the right-of-way. This is owned by Mrs. Schwartz and her husband, this five-foot strip.
All the way up?
All the way up.
Okay.
So that's what gives this, that's what gives this dog leg thing right here, right? So you can see, this whole strip was all the way up and is part of this parcel.
Okay.
Right?
Any additional questions for Ms. Deck?
Where was the topmost, the topmost panel on that map?
The topmost panel was...
The nor...
The northernmost panel?
Please.
I would say that's approximately right here, where that end is.
But that's still in the right-of-way?
Well, I mean, yes, this, these, the northernmost eight panels were all in the right-of-way.
As I understand it, the code stipulates that these are permanent structures. Is that correct? And that's what prevents them from being acceptable. But if they were temporary structures, then it wouldn't be a problem. Is that correct?
Well, this is permanent privacy fencing, so, I mean, regardless, you'd have to have, I mean, you'd have to have a permit for something in the front yard.
Even if they were on wheels?
Accessories are not permitted in the front yard.
I'm sorry?
Accessories are not permitted in the front yard.
Aren't accessories permanent versus temporary?
I suppose, sure. I mean, that could be one way to look at it. The standards for temporary structures, we do have, we do have language about, like, temporary, like tents, right, like a pop-up tent. There is, and those have to be on, like, they'd have to be on like a permanent, like a foundation, not a foundation, but like a paved surface to be up for any length of time. But I would have to go look and see specifically what we would have for, I don't, I can't think of anything right off the top of my head for temporary fencing of any sort, or privacy screening of any sort.
Or mobile artwork?
We have no, there's no standards for mobile artwork.
Okay.
Our definition, building is any structure either temporary or permanent?
Thank you.
Just to clarify. I had a couple of questions, if that's okay. Do we know when these panels were installed? And I'll certainly ask that for the petitioner as well.
They were originally installed at probably, I want to say, probably June, late June, maybe early July.
Okay. Do we know the history on the right-of-way plot? Was that originally plotted as a right-of-way, or did, was there a land transfer at any point? Did it used to be Ms. Schwartz or previous homeowners? Is there any?
No. I, I went, I went in the wayback machine and pulled out the old maps, like the white old maps. This is platted like this. So, and that's, that's even a conversation I've had with Mrs. Schwartz as well. This is, this is platted like this. I, to me, and I'm by no means an expert, but this to me looks like it could have been a map error at some point, back when this was originally platted. But from what I can tell, I mean, it's, this is the way it's been. We do not have, I mean, DPW has maintained the water systems. You know, we do have, like I said, we've got, there's some drains over here. There's some water keys over here. We've maintained that. We haven't really historically maintained the road itself. You know, and as we saw in that first picture, Mrs. Schwartz and her husband have made some improvements, right? They've got the sign, those little gates. I know from conversations with Mrs. Schwartz that they've paved that driveway. I think it was within the last couple of years. So, you know, they, they've been maintaining it, but it has remained under the control of the village.
Okay. Could you go to the screen after this? It has the colored view of the plotted land. It's your next note, maybe, yeah, that one?
Yep.
So, maybe it's a cross between the two, just so I, as I understand, the front yard for how- the front yard for house three, the house sits on three-one-five-five-five, which is what we're talking about, this variance potential. The house sits askew.
Correct.
So it's not like a traditional grid where I understand where the front is. Could you, without being a AutoCAD, or can you generally show, where, where is the front yard of this property?
So, it's a rectangle, right, so that, let's do our imagining, imagining our rectangle. It sits, you know, it sits almost lined up like this, right?
Maybe the next to you is the better one, cause you can actually see the roof line.
All right, here we go. So, front yard is, draw an imaginary line, right, across the front building line.
Okay.
There's everything in front of that is the front yard. The rear yard would then be everything, like draw that same kind of imaginary line along the back of the property line. And that would be your rear yard, so there's your rear yard. The side yards are the space between, so a wonky little knot triangle, right? And then another little wonky little shape over here.
So if the screen or fence complied with open air and the right height, it could be installed in the wonky projection you just described?
Yes.
Inside and in the rear?
Mm-hmm.
But not the front, which is a southeast view?
Correct.
And my last question is more, I don't know if it's technical on our own process, but there's two ordinances that we're referencing. One has to do with fences in the front yard, and when you have a fence, it's open-air percentage. But we also talk about privacy screens. And the request from the petitioner, at least as drafted, they're asking for a variance to install six-foot privacy screens? Does a privacy screen have to comply with a fence requirement, thus the thirty-five percent open air? And the reason I ask is, both, neither one seemed to allow a fence or a privacy screen in the front yard. But I'm evaluating this, like, do we even need to discuss or consider the front yard fence? Because the petitioner's not here asking for a fence. I believe they're asking for a privacy screen. I'm sorry to think of this earlier in the day.
Tom, do you have any thoughts on that one? That sounds like an actual question.
Well, I, when I read it, I assumed that the, you know, that zoning administrator was including that, that sort of essentially has another provision that you could grant variations for. So height, opacity, things like that.
Correct.
So it's, I guess I, it is another vehicle. Another thing that limits the fence in the front yard, or another section that you could point to and if you chose to grant the entry. Could it have been written just for the privacy screen?
Okay.
My comment, the way I understand from my own personal property was that privacy screens do not have an opacity requirement, first of all. And in my case, when I was going to permit, it was limited to the percentage of the rear lot line. So that could be six feet. There was no opacity restriction. It was just that lineage as twenty-five percent of the rear lot line. Of course, that's not in the front yard.
Right.
But it's in the side, and it's a side, it's a side yard. Maybe it is considered for here.
You're in a corner, you've got a wonky.
I do too, but nothing like this.
No, this is, this is, this is pretty wonky.
Okay. I would suggest procedurally, since we've been asked to review both variances, and I'm not suggesting action by any means, but you could technically reject the front yard fence ordinance, but accept the privacy screen in the front yard as one potential option.
I guess from my perspective, once the board determines that it does or does not want, if you're going to have to grant a relief?
Yes.
Then you could just include both.
Okay.
But I think that related to a question I asked, are you, are you interested in giving the relief? At least for the five panels that are outside the right-of-way? Just by way of explanation, you don't have the authority to give anything in the right-of-way.
Sure.
Outside the zoning ordinance, which is, so you have to...
And I appreciate that point, so I think, just to clarify, we're not here to consider putting these panels in the right-of-way. The variance is requested to put it in that five-foot sliver of land, so we're not suggesting, we don't have authority to do that on behalf of the village. Okay. Any other further comments or questions for Steph? The petitioner would come up to the podium, introduce yourself, please, name and address. And if you could please give any more detail or comments on your request.
First of all, I want to thank the board for allowing us to come before you for a request. I'm sorry, my husband is not well, so he's not here tonight to help. I also want to apologize, I am hard of hearing, so if I'm not hearing you and I ask anything, please forgive me. Okay. To give you a little background, I know you've received the paperwork. We bought the second home a number of years ago because our neighbor was a hoarder. And we lived next to that for fifteen years. And we're able to do nothing about it. And finally, when he passed away, we did buy the property from a family because we didn't want to lose control of that ever again, because it was like the TV show. So that's why we have that second home in the hopes of someday our daughter is interested. She's a resident of the village now, but she'd like to someday move into that property, and that's why it's vacant. Our house is adjacent to that. I brought along with me what you do not have in your packet. My husband and I have lived in the village for fifty-plus years in the same home. We have maintained the driveway for all of that time. It was paved when we bought the house, we've had it repaved, we plow it, we take care of all the maintenance, of the drains, of any trees that fall, trimming, pruning, everything. It's always been something that we have done ourselves. It's never been done by the village, just to clarify that. Can you hear me okay? Okay. And so, when we bought the house, Ronsdale was pretty much not visible to our property at all. There was a massive greenbelt there. There was a woodland between some of the houses that got cut down. Most of this took place around two thousand and twenty, maybe two thousand and nineteen. And then a prior neighbor that bought the house that affects us most cut down everything in the backyard. All of the greenery was cut down. They were going to re-landscape, but never did. So at that juncture, my husband and I started buying evergreen trees, which I have brought the receipts from going all the way back. I don't have all of them, but I have a lot of them. We spent thousands of dollars trying to get evergreens to grow in that area as a natural greenbelt, along with other vegetation, naturalized bushes that would be native to that area and farewell. We have planted no less than three times and had to tear them out because they failed. We hired a professional landscape company, arborist, everything. It's just so shady and the ground there is extremely dense and compacted from the tree roots. And we, I hauled that hose out there, all those feet, because we don't have a sprinkler system, and keep them watered, and it just kept, they would die. Sometimes the deer, we have a fairly good deer population. Some of the varieties, because we've tried different varieties, they would be eaten by the deer. We tried fencing, and we tried everything. They just, it did not take. So after three attempts, and between the cost of the trees, which we were buying six and seven footers, they averaged between a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy dollars each. And we were buying ten and twelve of them or more in that area to create that greenbelt, plus deliveries, plus mulch, and the cost of the labor to dig the holes and then to have them fail. And then I would have to pay for all the labor to take them back up again. And then we replant again some, another variety. So after doing this back to all the way to two thousand and twenty, we just, we just don't know what else to do to plant that area. The trees are heavily shaded. I don't own all of them. So there's not a lot of choice in what we can do to create more of a greenbelt. I would love to do, we've tried. We don't have a lot to spare money. This is thousands. And like I said, we got the letter from the, that you received from the landscape company to verify that they have done this work. So we, we just didn't know what else to do. We're, we're very impacted by Ronsdale in our home. We have headlights that come in. With the leaves down now, it's very prevalent. The pictures I tried to take, I'm not a good photographer, there was glare. But those headlights, they're LED lights, they come right into my living room. The lights from the rest of some of Ronsdale, now that the leaves are down for six months. We did that in our kitchen and in our living room, which face the front of our house. And those are our two main places of where we gather, you know, because gathering their kitchen and then their family rooms, and that's where we're at. So that has been impactful to us. And then, again, it's no one's fault. When this was all laid out many years ago, our front yard is the backyard of these other homes. People use their backyards. That's what they do. They have barbecues and children's play structures and toys and string lights and all the normal things that you would expect for the use of a backyard. But it is in our front yard. It's where we gather. Now, our backyard is very close to the edge of the ravine. We don't have much use of what's behind our house because there's a big drop and we don't, and the topography is very downhill. So we don't have much black, there is no black ground by us. So we are more in our front yard than the average might be because that's where all of the property that's level is, and I'm a gardener and I'm out there all the time. So our hus, my husband and I are sitting out on the front porch and we're in our front yard a lot. So we're seeing all of the things that are normal backyard things, and we, we're not faulting any of that. It's no one's fault. It's just our privacy is very impacted by the Ronsdale having all of that vegetation taken away. And we, we just can't come up with another solution. They, the backyards of Ronsdale would be allowed to put up six-foot privacy fences, which if you go through the village and you look at most families, it's backyard, backyard, front yards, face front yards. So, you know, we beautify our front yards for people that are coming in for curb appeal, all those things. But when you come into ours, we're seeing the back end of Ronsdale. So we came up with the idea, we didn't want to ask for solid fence. So we wanted the screens, which would give a garden effect, we felt, and try and put greenery. The greenery I planted in the summer of this summer in that area has already died. I have, we have only four small bushes, but everything else I planted, we already had to rip out, it already died. It's just so shaded there. So we are hoping that the board would understand our dilemma here and why it impacts us to have this glaring at us. Again, we don't fault the neighbors or anything. It's just the way it's set up, unfortunately. Most people would like their privacy, and we, we do too. And the, the impact of the lighting and everything is very, very imposing on us. So I hope that you can understand, we're not trying to do anything bad for our neighbors or it doesn't affect the village services in any way. It doesn't affect much of anybody that we know of in up there in an negative way. We're trying to make this nice-looking as possible and still have our, our privacy and make the property look nice from the, from the entrance and everything. So if, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Okay, so here I am.
Thank you. Board members, any questions for the petitioner?
No.
No?
I was not understanding, I couldn't hear when you were asking, if you don't mind, if it's okay, when you were asking about the thing with the fence ordinance as opposed to privacy screens? I, I didn't understand, because we were confused about how the ordinance reads, also about fencing and privacy screens and how they're different. I'm a little bit not sure what they were saying.
Sure, I guess since I asked the question, I'll kind of repeat what I was trying to determine. Is your, your variance request is for a, is to install a privacy fence in your front yard? And there are two ordinances that are being referenced in the packet. The first being fences allowed in the front yard. And if you did have a fence in the front yard, there's a certain open air requirement, right? So you can't have a solid fence in your front yard. It has to be at least thirty-five percent open to air. Whereas in your case, what you're asking for, as I interpret, is a privacy screen made up of panels. It's not a fence. It doesn't fence in an animal. It doesn't fence in people from falling into your pool. It's, it's, you requested a privacy screen. In my head, I'm seeing a privacy screen.
What we tried to do also, again, I hope I'm not talking out of turn, is to space them out so they were airy feeling, and it doesn't stop everything. It just helps to lower the impact of it all. It's not stopping it completely like any kind of solid fence, but it helps mitigate some of that impact that we feel from having that subdivision in the front yard. So that's why we spaced them a little bit. It doesn't like do everything we like, but we wanted it to have a softer look and be attractive looking as well.
So, Ms. Chair, if I could?
Yes.
To add to the answer I gave earlier, after looking at the definition of fence, it would still need the definition of a fence, even though it also has a privacy screen. So I think that sort of explains why you have to give relief from both.
Okay.
If that's what you decide.
Thank you.
Again, once you do decide, wrap them up.
Okay, thank you.
You need both variances from our perspective.
I need both. For, for what else, if you understand, the fence and the privacy?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I want to take a shot.
The fence, the sections that are listed within the, the notice for this request, right? It's based on the definition.
I thought we had sent it.
Oh, and two definitions? You're one definition that falls, that applies to both of those sections.
So now they're only the channel, they're one side.
Yeah.
I guess my other question, Ms. Schwartz, one of the considerations when we're looking to approve a request for a variance is, does applying strict letter of the zoning ordinance or the zoning restriction unreasonably prevent the landowner from using their property for a permitted purpose? Could you expand why if we were, as we evaluate, how is the ordinance, as it's written, which does not allow panels in your front yard, how is that unreasonably preventing you from using your home for its intended purpose?
You know what, Suzie, I didn't understand that. I'm so sorry.
No, no, no worries.
I apologize.
So if, if, how is not allowing?
To these questions?
Do these questions?
How is not allowing the installation of those panels? How is that preventing you from using your house or your home? Does it? And if so, how?
I don't think anyone here would want to have headlights in their living room and for not a moment or two that they're on for, like when people start their cars for several minutes, they're heating up the vehicles and there are two vehi, you know, there's multiple vehicles and you're sitting in the living room and all of a sudden these bright lights are shining in. It's, it does, it's not a wonderful thing to have going on. All the string lights that are common in backyards, it's, I don't think you will allow them in anybody's front yard, but they are in my front yard. So they do impact us because they're very visual. So it does affect how we live in our home. We lose that part of it. It's impactful. I can't imagine anyone here would want those kinds of lights in their living room and their kitchen when they're living in, especially in the evening and in the winter time, this is a long period of time. So it's lit, it's more mitigated in the summer because the leaves come out, but it's, it's very intrusive to us to have those lights.
And to that point, have you considered other means such as drapery or blinds in the window of the home to prevent the light from entering? Or have you looked at planting greenery, shrubbery, maybe closer to your property where it's in a more suitable plantable area?
We have tried planting more greenery closer. Again, so our property is heavily, heavily wooded. I have difficulty because I have giant oak trees. I have maples, very big, big trees. Okay? So finding things with our arborist and landscaper that will grow in the shade and not be eaten by deer. I have fencing around now, they, around different things I'm trying to grow. So it's not like we don't do that as well, but the property itself is so shaded, it limits us on the variety of what you can plant. There's not a lot of things that survive in heavy shade. So we have limitations on what vegetation. The best vegetation is called a hew. And we just had to rip out that we planted over the years in the last three years, at least thirty of them, because the deer have eaten them down to nubs. I bought spray and sprayed them. I put meshing on them, but you can't stop a two-hundred-pound animal that wants to eat it.
Sure.
You know?
And then as far as your home itself, have you, do you have drapery or blinds or some other means inside your home to stop the light intrusion?
We have blinds in certain parts of our home, but not in every room because one of the reasons we live there was so that we could enjoy the outdoors. Like I said, we've lived there for fifty years until this greenbelt, because they get sun in that area, until that was cut down, we never had a problem. It never happened before. It wasn't until this was cut down in the last, since around two thousand and twenty that we started getting the impact of all of that. Before that, it was not an issue ever all those years. But we bought the home because we want to see the woods and the trees. Otherwise, you know, when we're living there, we enjoy that country feel. But I, I have tried, my husband and I have tried everything. We've spent so much time and money and energy with greenery. And if you came to my yard now and you saw everything that's already been eaten, I mean, there, sometimes there are ten deer in the yard and, you know, there's only so much we can do. So we try to plant what we think they won't like. When they're hungry, they will eat anything. So they don't eat privacy screens.
Sure.
They, they don't do that. So like I said, we plan to, like I said, if you want to see my invoices for board dimes, I brought them with me. It's not like we're not trying. We really have done everything we can think of.
Thank you. I, I believe you. I don't know if the board wants to see the receipts, but no, I think you'd be earnest in your comments that you've made a lot of effort. So thank you. Are there any more questions for the applicant?
Just one last question. Have you worked with the neighbors of that neighborhood to talk about any way of working with them to find a, a screen that maybe they, because there is, you know, a letter saying that they were not a fan of the screen that you put in? Have you tried to work with them on any of that at this, to this point?
I, I only met the one neighbor a couple of times, just briefly, when there, when there were some other issues with weeds and things, but I, I don't see them hardly at all. I, I, I just physically haven't seen them much, so not really. I did try to have some contact, but it, it really didn't, nothing came of that. So I don't know. I, I didn't go and knock on their door, to be honest with you. I did not do that. I didn't know that it would be an issue for anyone. It wasn't meant to be anything malicious or unthoughtful or anything like that. That was not our intent at all. If I wasn't thinking about it, I wouldn't have spaced them apart and tried to, you know, we wanted to try and put some ivy on it because we were hoping the deer wouldn't eat ivy, you know, let it grow on the, on the screens and kind of get more greenery because we like it green too. But we, we just don't know what the deer are going to do. So I, I don't know what, you know, I, I didn't mean to do anything that would harm anyone.
Thank you. Any other questions? If you don't mind taking a seat, we'll carry on with the rest of the, the meeting. At this point, we're going to open the agenda item for public, public hearing. First, we will look at presentation of written comments. Ms. Deck, we had one letter, email?
Yes, we had one letter with, emailed with a series of pictures and those were also included, all included in your packet. That was from, that was from this neighbor right here. They are not able to be here. I did speak with them Friday and they, they stand by their comments, right? We did, I did speak to two other individuals. They did not submit written comments, but I did speak to two other individuals that received the direct notice. Neither one of those individuals were in favor of the variance. One was concerned with the, the use of the right-of-way over such a long duration of time, right? So neither were in support.
Thank you.
Yep.
And next, any members from the public here to speak on this item? If so, if you don't mind, in a orderly manner, between the four of you, take the podium. And just if you don't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
My name is John Lehman and I'm a resident of two oh three four eight Ron's Dale, which is in the upper right. And I think the reason we all have chosen to live on that side of Ron's Dale is we love the nature. We think of our house kind of like a mall. It's the city in the front yard and it's the country in the backyard and it's delightful. And I know I personally would prefer not to see things obstructing the view of the nature. I mean, in, in my mind, hearing everything that's been brought up tonight, there is no valid reason to permit this under the current code, other than your desire to approve the variance. I mean, there is nothing that's been presented that would meet the code if they continued with this six-foot-high fence. And from what I've heard as well, are the panels themselves six feet high or is the installed height six feet above grade? Are panels seventy-two inches in height?
The panels are seven feet.
They're six feet.
But they're, they start one feet above grade, so their top elevation is seven feet.
Now you've got a seven-foot fence, not a six-foot fence. You know, as far as if this is approved, there's no reason anybody else in the village cannot come by here, especially if you have a corner lot. And as people turn the corner, headlights go in houses. It's just part of subdivision living. So I personally would prefer not to see it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Marilyn Lehman and I live with John at two zero three four eight Ron's Dale. I also oppose the request for the six-foot privacy screens going in the front yard. Our zoning rules don't allow structures that tall in front yards because they change the look and openness of the neighborhood. Granting this variance would set a precedent for others to do the same, which could gradually alter the character of our neighborhood. There are reasonable alternative, alternatives such as blinds, curtains, or shades that block headlights without needing a zoning change. So I am opposing the request. Thank you.
Thank you. We, when we're done with public comment, we'll call you back up and you can give further comment. Any other members from the public here to comment? Okay. Having heard no other members from the public comment, we will close the public hearing at this point. If the applicant would like to come back up to the podium and give any concluding statements? Yes? Yep? Absolutely.
With regard to the neighbors, I don't believe that their house is anywhere near where my screens are or that they even see them. To my knowledge, you don't.
Now, you know, it's a matter of principle, precedent.
But if I might say, first of all, where we're requesting them are not in a right-of-way there on my property in terms of principle of these people not being impacted by anything that's happening to our property, nor have they maintained the property or spent all the money on my property. They're not, they're not even seeing it. So I, I, I'm surprised that they would come and say I'm doing something terrible, not trying to set a precedent or impact anything negatively. I, I don't mean to say this in disrespect, but I don't, I didn't know that it was our job to provide our neighbor with a view, view of our property for, for their beautification. If they want to have greenery, they can do whatever they like. I have no, I would love for them, so that I don't have to put a privacy screen, to plant a greenbelt for themselves that was there before. When we, up until two thousand and twenty, that's exactly what was there before. The vegetation they're talking about with the greenery, there was a woodland, a natural woodland, quite large between the two homes on Ron's Dale, and it was cut down. Now it's just weeds, mostly thistle they grow there. So what happened to that? Nobody did anything about proposing that somebody cut all that down. So some of those things that were there before just don't exist anymore. And if, I don't know what, what I would be doing wrong to ask for our privacy that has been changed. And if our neighbors want to put up a privacy fence or add greenery or whatever they could do to help with that, that would be wonderful. But I can't expect them to spend money, nor can they expect or ask me to spend money on blinds. I think that's not reasonable for them to, to, to do that. I mean, we've tried very, very, very hard to solve this problem. And it is a big problem for us directly. It doesn't impact them. It's impacting us. And it isn't just the lights. It's dripping in, and, you know, when I'm in my front yard and, you know, someone's having, they're having parties or proofs and things, these are things that are generally in the backyard, not in your front yard. So, and then I'm not trying to be unneighborly or unfriendly, but my husband and I value our privacy and we like having our opportunity to utilize our land, which we pay for and maintain how we would like, as we would expect anyone here would want that ability to utilize their property. Even though it's technically a front yard, it isn't your typical front yard. If anyone has come out and looked at it, it isn't typical. It's not, the ordinances are primarily designed, in my view, to, for the major group, backyard to backyard, front yard to front yard. This is a very unusual shape of property. I don't know how many there might be in the village, but I would say very small handful if any. Our property is very unusually situated. So I would ask the board to please understand this so that we, that we have an opportunity to resume our privacy. If our neighbors want to put up a greenbelt, we're a hundred percent for them. If I could cut their trees and let more light in, I would, but I'm not allowed to cut their trees. Okay? Only what's over, hanging over our property. So, you know, I, I just, I just can't imagine that anybody would want to punish us in the sense that we're not being neighborly or that we're objecting or trying to, you know, disrupt the country look of anything for somebody. It is our land. So we would like to be able to utilize it and still have it look good for everybody. You know, we tried. I, I just don't know what more to say. I just don't think that this is a fair assumption, especially since they're not even impacted. You know, they're not sitting in my property or my yard where we are. So I don't mean to be harsh or anything, but I just wanted to reiterate that for everyone. Okay?
Thank you. Hey. At that point, any concluding comments of staff?
I have nothing further to add.
Okay. At this point, we'll bring it to the board for questions and comments amongst ourselves. Discussion, thoughts?
I mean, the one thing I have, I've been looking at while everyone has been speaking is I've been looking at kind of examining on the Google Vision of Ron's Dale and how the, and at least from what I can see, there's only, you know, one house which is of impact to three, to either two one, three one five five or three one five five three. Now that's me sitting here today, so take that with a grain of salt. And you can look and see where the garages are placed as far as light coming through. I know three one five five is the property that's applying for the variance. The garage at two zero three seven zero appears to be straight on, which means if someone's coming down the road, they're turning in and they're turning straight into a garage at two zero three seven zero. The garage at two zero three The garage at 20392 appears, somebody appears to be pulling in and they turn left to go into a garage. There also appears to be a parking deck. And I guess I just don't see how having, what I see is two houses where lights might be constantly coming through an area enough to over, to grant such a variance in this instance. I think we all have lights that come in. I have a neighbor that backs his car in at 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock in the morning every night because that's his work hours. And I, I would love to have a giant privacy fence that goes all along. I'm not allowed to, and I have to understand that. I sympathize with you, ma'am, I truly do. I sympathize with you and I understand you bought there at a time where there was less development. But I, I just think things have changed and I don't know. I would not be voting in favor of such a variance. So, but I do sympathize with your position and I empathize with it because I'm in a similar position with at least the light intrusion into my house.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think we can all agree that this is a unique property. Okay. It stands on its own. And Mr. Beach, I hear you loud and clear too. I don't see the circumstances for granting a variance. I had sympathy, empathy towards you, of course, but I have, over my 20 years, I've been, been able to have this new neighbors. We, we worked together to create a privacy screen together. It only took 15 years to get there. But, you know, they like to back, we, we just worked it out together as neighbors. And I have a unique property, but I wouldn't be in favor. I don't see the, the circumstances to favor this.
Thank you. Okay. Like both colleagues said, I, I, I very much empathize with your position. When you bought the house, you had greenery, the greenery was removed out of your control. I do think it is a very unique property. What I, what I'm struggling with is the impact to the neighbors. They've clearly articulated that it would impact them in a not positive way. And I struggle with the consideration that it's unreasonably preventing you from using your home as the ordinance is written. And I, I'm struggling with, I certainly hate tabling ideas, but I think the, the comment raised by Mr. Miller and maybe even our discussions is, is there a scenario in which you could work with your neighbors to the east and come up with a solution?
I'm so sorry.
No? Yeah, please welcome, yeah. I'm very monotone and I mumble, so I will try to articulate really well.
You're probably lost, though.
You know, action one is if we were to not approve the variance, no solution similar to a fence or a privacy screen would be allowed. Whereas if we were to table, and I'm just brainstorming in my head, is could you communicate, meet with your neighbors, come up with a solution that might still need a variance, still may, you know, be considered a fence by our ordinance standards, but might be more visually appealing to them where you could both come up with a solution that has support from your neighbors that does not negatively impact them? It would delay a decision by the board. It would require some diligence on your end to meet with your neighbors and come up with a plan.
I don't think that they will speak with me because they are, I just don't think that they, that they were upset with me before about the, of the green problems.
Okay.
Wasn't anybody upset that I complained about the weeds, the thistle, and they were everywhere. I just can't dig them all myself anymore. I'm a senior citizen, I just can't do it. And when I tried to talk to her, she walked away from me. I didn't want to say that, but that's what happened.
Okay.
Because I don't want to cast any dispersion on anyone.
Okay.
I think that's a little bit of what precipitated some of this because of this whole, where the woodland gate came up. And it just was out of control. It was four and five feet high and everywhere. I talked to one of the grandmothers and said, you know, this is a problem and nothing was done. So I did call the village and said, you know, this is, it's very invasive. And after that, everything kind of shut down. So I don't know that there would be much perception if they would have cut their trees, anything.
Sure.
But that is not happening. So, you know, what do you do then? What do you do if the neighbor doesn't want, want to help you or cooperate? The only, the only other thing I could do is literally is cut all the trees that overlap from theirs onto the, to try and remove that shade and then cut down the few that I have there and just cut them out of there. Which is very costly and would not be very good-looking either. So, it's not like those are simple things to do. But I just, if you can't approach somebody, what do you do?
Thank you for your honesty, I appreciate that.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, I appreciate your honesty in sharing that, so.
You know, again, it's not that people don't, that having big place structures and barbecues and put those things that are hidden in most backyards, and they are. You don't see your neighbors' desks and barbecues and gatherings under the shoulders for these structures up front and center.
Sure.
Typically in the back. And that's always the way it is, but that's not what's happening here.
Understood.
It isn't just the lighting, it's the whole thing of that whole backyard area. Everything has a good pool and the string lights, and they all have string lights. And these are not things that you see in old front yards that I do. So it's much more than that, it's all of that combined.
Thank you.
We're just trying to mitigate it the best we can.
Understood.
You know, and have tried and, you know, we, like I said, we've planted over and over. I, I, you know, I'm trying to, I don't know what else can we do but a greenbelt. The trees that I bought had survived. They get 40 feet tall and 11 to 15 feet wide. It would be bigger and cutting more than 10 privacy screens that I'm, you know, tossing here and there. It would be a complete block of everything, but they aren't, they didn't work.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I was just trying to suggest maybe another solution would work, but I appreciate your answer, so.
I just can't understand such a complex.
Okay. We'll go back to the board if that's okay? Other members have any comments or, for done with comments? Request for a motion to approve or deny the requested variances?
I say move. I say move.
I'd be looking for a motion from a board member to approve.
You too.
Mr. Chairman, I move to deny the variance request by Mr. and Mrs. Howard Schwartz, property owners of 31555 Kenneway Court. This is parcel number 2403451001, ZBA case 1438, from Chapter 46 zoning, Section 46, 173, Sub 2, Sub A, Sub 1, and Section 46-173, Sub 2, Sub B, Sub 1. This determination is based on the finding that the petitioner has not demonstrated a practical difficulty exists based on the following criteria. One, applying the strict letter of zoning restrictions will not unreasonably prevent the landowner from using their property for a permitted purpose and/or conformity with the zoning regulations is unnecessarily burdensome because there are other options available to the homeowner. Two, substantial justice would not be achieved for the applicant and neighboring property owners by granting the variance. An approval of the variance would negatively impact adjacent property owners or land within the district because such neighbors have stated both here personally and by letter their disapproval of this. Three, the requested variance is not the least relief required. Four, the situation whereby it is unique to the subject's property is not, it is not such where a variance would be granted and not related to the general conditions of the area. Five, the circumstances requiring the variance are self-created.
Okay, we have a motion to deny the request. Is there a second?
All seconded.
Motion seconded. Do a...
Can I do a couple of things?
Yes, please.
First, want to clarify that the board is talking about the five or six panels that are not in the right-of-way.
So you have never talked about everything?
So, I guess clarification then for the record that in addition to the recent status of denial, any, any of the panels that are proposed in the right-of-way can't be approved by the board. So the reasons relate to the, the panels on her property. Just a clarification, does the maker of the motion agree to that?
Yes, I do.
I guess I'd like to, since you have a lawyer here, just kind of trying to make the record a little better. So, please don't get upset. So, on item number one, you indicated that this would not unreasonably prevent use of the property owner, use of the property by the applicant. Because there are other options available, I just wanted to explore that a little bit in case it becomes an issue. Is that other screening that could be placed on the applicant's own property and other treatments she could do to her home to avoid lights?
As an example, as two examples.
So I could have those two just added to the part of the motion.
But not limited to, yeah?
But not limited to. And then, I guess, under item number two, I think it would be appropriate to acknowledge that this would be the only fence and screening in the area. So in terms of doing substantial justice to the neighbors, this is essentially, this would be unusual for the area.
Okay.
Okay, so if I could have those added, Mr. Chair?
Yes, as a motion maker.
I would agree, yes, I would, I concur. If I, as long as I don't have to start over.
Second the motion as amended.
Thank you. I was just going to ask if we needed to resecond it, so. Okay, thank you all. If we can take a vote on the motion, please?
Okay. Mr. Beasley?
No.
Ms. Tomich?
Yes.
Ms. Stoker?
Yes.
Mr. Rusoff?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Beach?
Yes.
Mr. Merron?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ron?
Yes.
And Chair McCollum?
Yes.
Okay, so the, the motion to deny the requests has been approved.
So what happens now? I don't understand what, what would be next, so that I understand, I'm not done with you.
Sure. I would recommend that you meet with the village, whether it's Suzie or another member of the staff, to look at what other options you have that are compliant with the ordinance as written. I know you've expressed some pun, maybe not intended, fences that need to be amended with a neighbor. Maybe you can find a solution that is agreeable to, to both parties.
Well, can the neighbor put up a six-foot fence then, for themselves?
They could put a fence up that's compliant with the ordinance in their rear yard, yes.
Six foot?
I, I believe six foot is, the, the fence ordinance was just rebooted recently, so I don't have it off the top of my head. So I would say they could put up a fence in compliance with the ordinance, yes.
I believe it is six.
Thirty-five percent.
Are there any other alternatives that I have other than that?
Unfortunately, our, our work, we're all volunteers for the zoning board. We're here just to kind of evaluate as presented. I would encourage you to, to meet with the village staff and...
Did anyone get a chance to look at this, to actually see the problem?
So I, again, I would encourage you to, to meet with the village and talk to your neighbors and maybe find a solution that...
I just don't know if any more solution could come from them.
I know, I, and we, that, that sentiment is empathized by us, I, I feel for you. I could hear the frustration.
All right, well, thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
I will follow up with you in the morning. I will follow up with you in the morning. Okay?
Okay, next on the agenda under new business is the 2026 Zoning Board of Appeals Calendar of Meetings. Hopefully you've all coordinated with your personal schedules and you're making availability. But this is the calendar laid out. I won't read it verbatim, but we do everything from January of 2026 to January of 2027 listed. A reminder, meetings will continue to start at 7:00 PM. That was a change from last year we made, I believe, mid-2025?
Possibly. I mean, you can, you can, everybody else is staying with seven. If you want to change it, you know, feel free to move it earlier. No, yeah, I mean, I did discover, you know, we really only have to have two meetings a year. That would be two really big meetings, but no, at 7 o'clock is what I'm, is, is what I'm proposing. If, if, if you guys still want to meet at 7:00 or if you want to move it back to 7:30, that would be fine.
Any discussion on start time or is the board okay with the 7:00 PM start?
If 6:30 is on the agenda, you know.
I mean, I'm not here until 4:30 every day, so.
If 6:30 is possible, it'd be even better, but, but that's just personal. I'm perfectly happy with 7:00.
I'm happy with 7:00.
I'm happy with 7:00.
I like 6:30.
I like it too, for whatever it's worth. 7:00 sounds like it's going to be the winner.
We can talk about 6:30 in another year.
I, I'm a man of the people. 7:00 does work better for my balance between getting home from work and saying hello to family and getting here, but that's just my own personal thought, so. So with that, I believe we need a motion to adopt the 2026 ZBA Calendar of Meetings. Might there be a motion?
Motion to adopt the 2026 Calendar of Meetings.
Second.
Motion made, motion seconded. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. All right. Motion to adopt has taken place. Third item on the new business are the ZBA bylaws. And I apologize, Ms. Steck, remind me again, did we used to have bylaws? And these are the new bylaws, or we did not have bylaws and now we're just getting caught up with modern times?
The latter.
That's what I thought.
Right, so I never had them, and it's darn fine practice to have them. And I had a really awesome memo that apparently I didn't click the right box in the new system. So you guys don't get the memo, sorry. But it essentially says that this is, bylaws, it is a best practice that, that we should be adding to our list, right? Like, we really do want to get to modern times. This is also something that was identified in the Redevelopment Ready Communities Scorecard that we have, you know, we, we are in the process, slow-moving process that it may be, to become certified with the state under that RRC program. And so, before you tonight are, I mean, these are some pretty standard bylaws. You are actually practicing these bylaws on a regular basis during our meetings. Really, some of the only things that we don't have currently that are in these bylaws is we don't have a secretary, right? We should have a secretary and you guys can, you know, vote amongst yourselves or will vote amongst yourselves. vote amongst yourselves, or will vote amongst yourselves to do so, but it really just spells out, you know, what is, why is the ZBA formed, what are you tasked with doing, what do each of these officers, officers, what are they, what's their role, how do the meetings run, and, you know, how, what are the rules that are going to govern the actions of this board? So, like I said, they're pretty basic, pretty straightforward, and I suppose the only, the only thing that we may want to consider adding that is not in here is something about attendance. In my previous community, there was, in the bylaws for all of our, all of our boards was an attendance, right, you, if you missed, if you have three or more unexcused absences, then that is grounds for removal. Right now, that is handled under the policies and procedures established by councils, by councils, so. There, those policies and procedures spell out that removal from any sort of board is due to mal or misfeasance, but that's it, there's nothing about it, and so, that's really up to you. If you want to kind of chew on this, I mean, we can certainly push this to the next meeting, or if you're feeling comfortable with what's written, we can adapt and carry on with our wonderful selves.
We can also, a motion to adopt and revise later?
Yes.
Amend and add.
But I can answer any questions.
Have all members had a chance to review the bylaws? Would giving another month do justice for five pages, or? To Ms. Steck's point, the absence policy or rule or bylaw, I thought was in the village charter, and I'm using words, I clearly don't know, but rules that govern how we were.
Policies and procedures?
Yeah, I, I thought that was in there, because that's where we started excusing absences last year, so I didn't want to contradict something in our bylaws, because sometimes when you say things twice, maybe it says something different, but what I'm hearing is it's not written anywhere.
Not about the number of absences, right, I know that we track absences, we track it, or we, we track attendance, right, so, and there is, and I honestly, I couldn't tell you, I think it's, I want to say it's, you have to be at meetings 60% of the time, maybe it's 70%, so that does get factored in when, when terms are up, right, but I don't, it's not officially laid out, right, that you have, you know, you have three, three or more unexcused absences, you're out. It may be different for the actual council, but not for the board.
So, it sounds like we're empowered to do that on our own, or be silent to it, so, does this board feel strongly about putting something into our own bylaws about X number of meetings, then you're out, or do we want to leave silent and as written?
Merritt, you guys are pretty good about attendance, so, I never worry about your, about making form for this board.
Before it's worked, then after it's worked, we can be kicked by somebody from my very first attendance chair. It's typically not in the bylaws, because the council could do whatever, it's gonna do, quick look at your charter, talks about the four as a potential reason for, considering it to be a vacancy.
Okay.
But even that's just up to the council, so I think you're covered, do you want me to add?
I really like having you here.
Me too, me too.
Where were you during the chickens? Oh, no, I guess, oh, okay. I appreciate that clarity, exactly.
Question?
I have a question, don't we have a different standard for voting on a use variance versus?
Use variances are, it's a super majority.
Should that be included and under the, under the.
Rules.
Rules, where it says a quorum.
Yeah.
6A says a quorum shall assist them of majority, and a majority of all those members.
No. It can be, it's simple, it's a super majority.
Everybody else wants to go home.
Sorry.
That was a good job. I know, you get paid for that somewhere.
Four, thirteen, four.
When I write my thesis, I'll give it to you for a read.
All right, so, I believe a simple sentence at the end of A, saying a super majority is required for granting a use variance, a decision?
On the whole board.
Right? Yes.
I thought, for non-use variances, if we only had five members show up, that's, that's quorum, right?
Mm-hmm.
That all five, that there's a minimum number of votes, not a super majority to approve a non-use variance, correct?
Non-experiences are simple majority.
Of those present, or of the total board members, so if we only had six of, there's nine of us, or?
Then five wouldn't be a quorum, right? What, what establishes a quorum?
So, a quorum is the majority of the entire board membership, so that would be five, right?
So, if we don't have five people here, we can't have a meeting?
No, yeah.
Or we have less than five, yeah.
If you have four, four or less people, then there's no meeting. There has to be at least five of you.
That's quorum.
That's a quorum, and then there would have to be at least, it'd have to be three to vote, to grant, yes, per, per this. So, the quorum shall consist of a majority of the entire board membership, so five. Provided a quorum is present, a majority of those members present shall be necessary to approve any motion, resolution, or recommendation, except as otherwise required. A super majority, I guess, is it of the whole board?
I don't know.
A super majority is required for granting a use variance.
I recall a case probably three years ago, that, where there was a snowstorm and there was, I wasn't here, I was just reading the notes, but I was led to believe that you needed five votes, regardless of the board, sitting board, because there was, in this particular meeting, it was with a neighbor, they, that's the term, when you adjourn to the next meeting, so they moved it to the next meeting, because there were seven, and they, they didn't think that they could get all, they couldn't get five out of the seven. So, I want to make sure that that's abundantly clear.
The word you just said is what I was thinking.
What was that?
No, yeah.
abundantly clear?
Oh, yeah, because there's cases where if there's a shortage of us, the petitioner might be in their best interest to table it to the next meeting when they can get more votes, but as there's less of us, their odds of securing a majority are higher.
It was, this was about three months before my case came up, that gives you an idea, and, and it was my neighbors, the Fidelis, that were, that were looking for a variance on their, on their garage thing.
Ah, yes, Tim, I think I said it every single week, I'm so glad you told me about people, all right, like.
Okay.
I got at least six of three.
Is that how you recall, five? I'm pretty sure it's, there's something in that that says five.
Yeah, I'm having this, I don't think it's majority of.
More, yeah, of that.
I think it's a five.
If concurring vote, a majority of the members of the zoning board of rules is necessary to reverse any one of the decisions.
I don't have the internet here.
A concurring vote of members, it is necessary to reverse a power, a decision for the termination of the administrative official or body, to decide his favor of the applicant on their, upon which this ZBA is required to pass, and the zoning board is ordered to grant a variance of zoning board.
So, a majority of the entire board, then?
Correct.
And, come on, it's, you got that one? I mean, I think you need, so.
I was gonna say, all right. Do we need to take a motion to table?
I think you can just take no action, and it just will.
All right. We're gonna take no action on item C, ZBA bylaws. And for those that want to throw their hat in the ring, perhaps next meeting, we can also nominate and approve a secretary for the board. I thought it was interesting that bylaws say that the chairperson can assign the responsibilities to the vice chair at any time, so if there's ever an uncomfortable situation, I don't want to deal with, I think it's gonna. Okay, there is nobody here from the public, so I think it's safe to say we can move on from public comments, item eight. Our liaison, Mr. Drummond, is not present, so we do not have any liaison comments that I'm aware of. Administration comments.
Well, I already told you of that, and the vote turning out representation, so this is, this is exciting. Beyond that, I mean, I'll bring the bylaws back for our next meeting, whatever that may be. The deadline was today for January, so we are not going to see each other in January, I hope we'll see each other in February.
Hopefully, I'll be skiing anyway, I don't just.
I am looking into the training as well, we did the, you know, the 101, and now there's the advanced, advanced ZBA training, so I will be, I will be looking into that, the Michigan Association of Planning, we did it first before, they kind of go on like a end-of-the-year hiatus, and they will kick those trainings back up in the, in the early part of the year, so, stay tuned, if there's a meeting, they're ringing, we don't have action, that might, you know, I'd like to use our time wisely, and we can schedule something there, so, but stay tuned. Otherwise, I think that's it from me, so I hope you all have happy holidays, one for the year, and all that good fun stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it, do I understand it correctly, that training would be held here?
Yes.
Okay, I really appreciate that, last time we did that, I think in the previous, there's been recommendations for us to go out somewhere, so I really do appreciate that you're bringing that in here where we can get to probably quicker, easier.
Absolutely, my pleasure. You want me to see if I can get our same presenter back? Did you like her? I mean, I like her, she's pretty cool, but did you like her style?
Yeah, I thought it was a well, well-prepared training, and I don't have a lot of experience in judging a ZBA training instructor, so, I thought I learned when she spoke, so it was good.
All right, perfect, so.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Steck. Next on the agenda, zoning board member comments, do any members of the board have any comments they would like to share?
Not that I want to, I've been contacted a couple of times by inquiring neighbors, and I feel like it's my duty to say something, I didn't, I didn't actually make any comments or, but, I've had one conversation, two emails, expressing concern over the building, Rama, the mosque, prayers, the parking, are we doing something about it, and I don't need to have an answer, I'm just, I figured you've been, it's been brought to your attention.
I am well aware what's, what the issues are over there right now, we're working on it, right, I've, I've had contact with the property owner and their property manager, right, a couple of different times, and we're working to set up a meeting and resolve our issues, or their issues, rather. I am really, you know, it's, there's a couple things that are, been kind of happening with that, that, you know, run the spectrum of, you know, the zoning considerations of, you know, changes of use and occupancy and the parking lots and whatnot, there have also been some, you know, I've had communication and brought the, both the fire marshal and the building official in these conversations, so that we're really covering our bases, so I know it may not look like a whole lot is happening, or that maybe we're not doing something outwardly visible, but it's because we're not, we're doing, working internally to make sure that we're on, we're on the right track, but.
But from a board member, my response of, my almost unofficial no comment is the way to posture these things.
Well, and I would say for anyone that is, you know, experiencing that and having neighbors reach out or friends reach out, please have them contact me.
That's.
Because, I mean, I'm glad to hear it from any of you, but it's, it's actually better for me to hear from people directly, just to know what they are experiencing directly, it just helps.
Yeah, my response was to repeat, you know, to direct them to you and to say that they always have the ability to publicly comment on any village meeting.
Absolutely, absolutely, but feel sorry to give my email and my phone number.
I did.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, only closing comment I'd have is to wish everybody a safe and happy holiday, and enjoy some time off with your family, it sounds like we won't see each other in January potentially, maybe unless something changes, so, it's like February 9th potentially, so, wish you all well. With that, looking for a motion to adjourn today's meeting?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion made, motion seconded, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Our meeting is officially adjourned.